Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Just like to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person designed to address the Commission shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, and that card shall include the person's full name, address, and the numbered agenda item. If it is not completely filled out, then the person will not be recognized. Thank you for your attention to that matter. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, leishens, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, but I do want to point out that Item 10.3 is a request for a continuance.
To a date certain?
To a date certain of December 9th, 2024. Separate action needs to be taken on it when you get to that item.
All right, we will have a motion when we get there. Thank you. Now we'll turn to the first item on the agenda, which is a presentation on the status of the Waterfront, Your Waterfront, Your Way, Report. Ms. Fariel?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you, City Commissioners, City Administration, and members of the public. For the record, Jennifer Fariel, Housing and Community Development Director. And it is with great excitement that I stand before you to give you an update on the Your Waterfront, Your Way Initiative, not only professionally but also as a resident of the downtown and a resident of a city that I absolutely love, for lack of better terms. It really has been an honor to work on this project and to work with our residents, stakeholders, and business leaders on this very important initiative. So, Mayor, I thank you again for entrusting me with this task. Some of the items that we will review today through this presentation will provide a purpose of the initiative itself, just for the members of the public who are unaware of what this entails. We're going to talk a little bit about our approach to the project and to the report itself. I'll provide a timeline of the efforts that have been undertaken over the last 12 months or so, discuss a public activation event, which was really a celebration of our residents and the feedback that they provided. We'll talk a little bit about the Recommendations Report, a draft that has been completed that is currently, and I want to emphasize on draft, that is currently being reviewed by staff, and then we'll discuss next steps. So, for those of members of the community who are unaware of this initiative, I want to say that it goes without say that the downtown waterfront is a vital economic, social, and cultural hub for not just our city but for our county. And in direct response to the Mayor's commitment for a very public and open process and an inclusive process, we wanted to ensure that we gave the community a large an opportunity to provide feedback on our downtown waterfront. And as such, the Your Waterfront, Your Way Community Engagement Initiative was born, and in essence, as I stated, was to solicit feedback from all of our city residents, our business, our local groups, our visitors, all of the users of the waterfront, on how we can collectively work together to create a more vibrant, equitable, equitable was a big part of our focus, and resilient downtown waterfront. Specifically, we focused on Flagler Drive, from the Flagler Memorial Bridge to the north, to the Royal Park Bridge to the south. We began our planning efforts a little bit over a year ago, and all of our activities for this initiative began in spring of 2024. I want to emphasize that one of the major components and what we really try to focus on, and what I try to focus on, was to enhance our public trust. It was really important for me to really work with the residents so that they felt that they were, we were communicating with them, that they were aware of the process, that they had plenty of opportunities to provide feedback, and that we had a very transparent and inclusive process. So, in essence, I want to also highlight that we didn't, this work was not done just city staff on, by ourselves. We did hire multiple consultants who assisted with this effort, street plans who assisted with the actual conducting the meetings and working with us on the draft report, Articula Consulting assisted with the community engagement and how we engaged individuals and created public awareness of this initiative, and Business Flare assisted us with the data collection. And so, how we approached this project, it was really important for us to really create a compelling, accurate story of the waterfront that was reflecting specifically on public sentiment, so we wanted to ensure we got adequate public feedback, but that was also grounded in data. I know it's very important for the Mayor and for this governing body to make decisions that are also driven by data and facts, and so we wanted to ensure that we highlighted that as a part of this report. So, first and foremost, we looked at our qualitative data. So, we conducted a community survey, which ran from March to April of 2024, in English, Spanish, and Creole. We had various stakeholder engagements, we had discussions with all city departments, we had various discussions with external organizations and users of the waterfront, we received various stakeholder memos from different business leaders and community members expressing their insights of what they'd like to see in the waterfront. We held major, we had three public and well-attended public meetings, and we also had two walkabouts with specific groups, including the downtown community and some of the other stakeholders. We did a very aggressive digital outreach campaign to increase awareness of the initiative. We utilized Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, YouTube. We also had an email campaign and reached approximately over 52,000 recipients. We focused also on door-to-door outreach. We wanted to ensure that we reached neighborhoods with low digital literacy, so we targeted areas like the historic northwest and Coleman Park, and we were able to do a door-to-door campaign. Then we also wanted to look at a quantitative data. So, we focused on visitor behavior, we wanted to look at the economic impact and the demographic profiling of the users of the waterfront, we wanted to benchmark our growth and assess historical trends for potential redevelopment strategies or historical trends in the sense of what are the types of events and types of things that individuals would like to see in the waterfront. And what we wanted to really consider is to ensure that we had, first and foremost, diverse and representative sampling, so that we ensured that we talked to different neighborhoods, we wanted to ensure that we had a very inclusive sampling of individuals who provided feedback throughout this process. We wanted to ensure that we also balanced conflicting stakeholder perspectives. I mean, everyone has an opinion on what they'd like to see, what they don't like to see, so we wanted to make sure that it was balanced with folks from different backgrounds, different ages, different economic statuses and whatnot. And we wanted also to integrate data into the cohesive narrative. Again, we are very focused on making sure that we have data-driven decisions. And one final piece is just addressing or balancing, for a better term, public perception versus factual data. I mean, there's certain areas of our downtown waterfront that are perhaps underutilized, and that's where we were able to work and obtain foot traffic analysis to say, hey, maybe perhaps we have to activate this one area of the waterfront as it's extremely underutilized. So, when we developed the draft report and all the recommendations that are to come, we looked at all of these different data sets, both qualitative and quantitative. So, what exactly have we been doing over the last year or so? So, again, this effort started in the fall of last year, and from that until April, we were really doing internal and external stakeholder meetings. We met with all the departments, with all of the major waterfront stakeholders. Also, we began the planning stages and what exactly we were going to do to reach the outcomes that we wanted to reach. We had our digital survey and public outreach, which again began from March to April earlier this year, and again, that included in-person and digital outreach to maximize participation. We had our public workshops and our walking tours in the month of April, and we drafted and had our, and our draft goals and our strategies development, we took an ample amount of time to do, review this information. The reason for that is, we had a lot of data, we had a lot of information, and we wanted to make sure that we were very thoughtful to include all the different perspectives and all of the different feedback that we had received. In celebration of our, of all of our residents and to celebrate this collective effort, we did have a public activation campaign, I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And currently, over the last several months and moving forward, we are reviewing and finalizing this report that I know all of our residents and the members of this governing body are very excited to see. Again, I want to highlight the Chill in the City event, which was a public activation event, and it was really intended to be a community engagement initiative that really, it was a thank you to our residents, it was a thank you to those who participated in this effort. We wanted to highlight some of the things that we had heard consistently through our feedback sessions, more activation in the waterfront, more public events, more diverse cultural offerings. So, we did a little bit of a wellness activity event where there were cold plunges, we had some trap yoga, which was a lot of fun, we had massages, coffee bars, juice bars. It was a really fun event, and I know that there were some of the commissioners that were present, so thank you for supporting that. I think we had a couple hundred, maybe anywhere between four or 500 participants who took advantage of this public activation event, and we heard nothing but positive feedback. So, the draft recommendations report, we have final, or we have received a draft recommendations report from our consultant. I want to emphasize our draft because it is still very much being reviewed by city staff. I have to be honest, and I want to make very clear that we are having some challenges with the data accuracy. It was very important, this report is too important, and this effort is too important for the data not to be accurate, and when I presented to the Mayor and to the city administrator that we had some issues with the data accuracy, they agreed that, let's make sure that we get it right, because this is very important, we want to make sure that no number is questioned, you know, that we have the right information to share with our residents. And we also want to make sure that the recommendations that are provided by the consultant align with current city efforts. I mean, things change all the time, new initiatives come into play. I could think of one thing in the top of my head where way of finding was a, you know, one of the things or considerations, and we're already working on some of these things, so I need to meet with all the different departments, I need to make sure that what 's being recommended aligns with current city efforts and initiatives. So, we want to be very thoughtful with this report, again, it's too important. So, again, we're reviewing the draft, I mean, redefining and validating the findings, and we hope to be on track by the end of the calendar year. Again, this document is in draft format and remains subject to revisions and to updates. And so, in terms of next steps, again, we want to finalize the visitor data, the economic performance, and the community feedback, make sure all those insights are accurate. We want to complete and incorporate all of the staff feedback. We have met with various departments, with legal, with the CRA, not only at the beginning but also at the back end, with art life, with all of the different departments, just to make sure that all the recommendations align with, you know, existing priorities and items that we're currently working on. Once all of that is done and the final recommendations report is completed, we intend to present it to this governing body at a city commission meeting like this one or at a mayor commission work session. And I, we are slated to have this final report completed by the end of the calendar year and then subsequently shared with our residents and our stakeholders. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, thank you for the update. I know the public is anxiously awaiting the results, and I appreciate your commitment to getting it done and making sure the data supports the decision. It's much more important to get it right than rushed, so we will have to take the time necessary, but looking forward to seeing that work product. Thank you for your hard efforts. Any questions, comments for Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments in the beginning, that we wanted to make sure we're ensuring trust with the community in this process. I know that from the public outreach events that I attended months ago, that that was something that was very clear, that the public wanted to make sure we're listening to their feedback, we're not, you know, putting forth our own ideas, that truly we're taking their ideas and reflecting it in this report. So, I echo the Mayor's comments that I'm glad we're taking the time necessary to make sure we get it done right. So, thank you so much for all your efforts, and it was a pleasure to take part in the Chill in the City event a few weeks ago and to see so many people out there enjoying a unique opportunity on the waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, I appreciate the update and look forward to the full report. I wonder if you are able to discuss a little bit about what happens once we have, see what the report says. I mean, the next steps will be coming back to us as a board to, for our feedback about moving forward or voting on what's going forward, and I just wonder if you could talk a little bit about that. I've had some concern, residents, as you might imagine, calling me this weekend, wondering what this update was, you know, kind of came out of nowhere, and I appreciate that we're just updating the public to let them know, we don't really have an update now, but we're, it's coming soon. But if you can just touch upon a little bit about what you expect the process to be once we do have a report, and so we can give the public a little bit more of what to expect.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to, you know, touch on one of the points that you made was, we, when we did call, and we have a mailing list, and we sent it out to our mailing list informing folks that we would be presenting today, as I stated, it was very important for them to be informed of what we're doing and every step of the way. To answer your question, I would imagine, and of course, you know, we're going to follow further discussions with Mayor and City Administration, but I would imagine that it's going to be an open conversation. Are there any specific, you know, areas of priority that this governing body would like for us to look at, are there any specific considerations that perhaps we need to evaluate? Is there a next step? Is there a plan that we need to, another step in this plan? I would imagine that it would be an open conversation with some staff guidance or suggestions, and then this governing body could make a determination on what those next steps are. I don't foresee there being any discussions outside of those that are going to be taking place with this group, but it would be a public discussion that we will have.
Well, I mean, this study is like any other study, there's no official action of the city until it is discussed and greeted upon or voted upon by this body. So, we'll receive the report, we'll have one or more meetings where we discuss the report itself and come up with a plan of action that is voted upon by this board. So, yes, it'll be something that the public has ample opportunity to weigh in on. Yes.
If I could, I just want to footnote that as part of this process, staff will look at the recommendations and do some sort of analysis on what is feasible and not feasible. So, that certainly will be included, and then what is discussed with the board, whether it's by work session or a presentation at this meeting. We have to do an evaluation of what is feasible, whether it's from a financial standpoint or a practical standpoint or otherwise.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we do have a card, this is only a presentation, I'm taking any action, but we do have a card. Mike Schmidt?
Well, I have a question.
You need to come up to the mic and identify yourself, sir, please.
Yes, I'm Mike Schmidt, 315 Hibiscus Street. What I really have is a question, but I can't really ask a question, I've got to make a comment.
You can make a comment, you can ask a question, don't expect an answer from the dais, we don't generally do that.
Well, I guess one thing that would be a little reassuring is if in the presentation process, if it's not just, if it's also presented to the public what the findings are before there's a commission vote taken on that, is there any plan for a public presentation of the findings of that study?
Well, the report will be released. Generally, if it's going to be considered at either a workshop or a meeting, that becomes part of the package that's distributed to the public. You want to weigh in, Madam City Administrator or Madam City Attorney, as to the details?
I was just going to point out as a footnote to your comments that if it's presented in a work session, that certainly is open to the public and as is this meeting. What we have not yet decided, that we're going to just have a designated public meeting for the presentation of the report itself, I mean, they're sort of one in the same. All of our meetings are public, and the public certainly would be notified and invited to attend and hear the presentation to the board.
Okay, so to answer the question, so the answer to the question is, there will be a work session, a commission work session, at which the public will be invited, is that correct?
Yes, those meetings are open to the public, yes.
Okay, and approximately how much advance notice will the public?
Okay, this is not a whole question and answer thing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, if you want to talk to a member of staff offline, you could do that, but the public will have ample notice of when this is teed up at either a work session or a city commission meeting, and it'll be consistent with the protocols that have been established for other reports, so.
Okay.
You'll get ample notice.
Fair enough.
If you have any further questions, you can speak to staff offline.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Fariel, for that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will now turn to the consent calendar, Items 7.1 through 7.9. Commissioners, any questions, comments on consent? 7.1, I'm sorry, 7.1 through 7.11, I missed two. 7.1 to 7.11. Any questions, comments? All right, we do have a card on Item 7.1, Clint Christos Pavlakis. Christos Pavlakis?
Yeah, I'm present. Should I go up to the?
All right, so you do not wish to speak, you want me to read your comment, or you do want to speak?
Well, now I'll speak.
Well, don't speak from there, come up to the mic and identify yourself, and you're free to comment.
You can put the mic.
Either one.
My name is Christos Pavlakis. I noticed that the, the document I received earlier was a draft and that it's actually Item 8.1 now, so 7.1 no longer pertains to my situation.
All right, so you want to speak on Item 8.1, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so if you need, fill out a card when we get there, then we'll call you back up for 8.1.
Do you want me to switch the card?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Anything else on consent? Hearing no further comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of the items on consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we will turn to Item 8.1, Resolution Number 245-24, granting a revocable license for use of city property to Julian's Brass Array Limited DBA Avocado Grill for use of a portion of the pedestrian alley adjacent to 125 Day Tourist Street for restaurant seating.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Claudia Baves, City Urban Designer in the Planning Division. So, we did receive this request from Avocado Grill business owner to use a portion of the alley that is located adjacent to their business. Here, as you can see in this map, you can see the location of it, of the alley, and the address for the business is 125 The Tourist Street. City staff has reviewed this application and make sure that it doesn't impede with any other operations of the alley, and we have no objections, and we do recommend approval of Resolution Number 245-24.
All right, any, thank you for that presentation. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I just want to clarify, this is the same alley that they're already currently using? We're just extending the lease for them?
So, they were previously using it when, you know, COVID hit, there was more flexibility for business owners to be using the outdoors. We passed regulations related to sidewalk cafes, and because of that now, per guidance for our law department, we are using these alleys or accepting this request and reviewing them as license agreements.
You have follow-up?
No.
Any other questions? All right, so we did have the gentleman who wanted to speak on Item 8.1.
I just, I just want to let him know, he's actually representing the business owner of Avocado Grill, in case you had any questions for them.
So, before we bring up the business owner, any more questions for staff? If not, okay.
If you have any questions for him.
The applicant or the representative of the business owner, do you want to?
I'm representing him, actually.
Okay, do we have any questions for the business owner? Okay, any other cards? All right, if not, no comments, no other cards, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to Resolution Number 245-24, second.
It's been moved in second, at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now turn to public hearing portion of the meeting. Item 9.1, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Number 5116-24, adopting the amendments to Article 2 Building Code and Article 7 Flood Plane Management of Chapter 18 of the City of West Palm Beach Code. Mr. Wall?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Ralph Wall. I'm a management analyst with the Development Services Department, and let's see, I have a brief presentation here on the item. So, this is a code revision, let's see here. Actually, they have two presentations, they're back-to-back, they're related, I don't want to confuse everybody, because the first one that we're talking about is the first reading of the code revision, and specifically, the FEMA regulations require, have certain requirements for the city to adopt elements for the National Flood Insurance Program, which includes the flood plane maps.
So, Mr. Wall, are you saying that this presentation also relates to Item 9.2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let me read 9.2 into the record.
Yes, sir.
And that way you can discuss, this presentation will apply to both. So, Item 9.2, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Number 5117-24, a city initiated request for a text amendment to Section 94-611, definitions of the zoning and land development regulations to remove or modify definitions relating to development in flood hazard areas. So, now we're, this relates to Items 9.1 and 9.2.
Right, so, the FEMA requirements are that, that we're discussing today specifically, the FEMA did a coastal flood insurance study and produced new flood maps for our coastal areas, and those maps have been declared by the FEMA to become effective on December 20, by December 20th, or on December 20th, 2024. So, on June 20th of this year, FEMA provided the city with a letter of final determination, as is their standard practice, for the determination of the coastal flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps. And in that letter, they stated that the firm, the flood insurance study and the firm will become effective on December 20th. The City of West Palm Beach is required to adopt the flood insurance study and the firm with an effective date. the flood insurance study and the firm with an effective date of December 20th, 2024, for continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The firm and the flood insurance study for the City of West Palm Beach will come effective on 2020, December 20th, 24, with the adoption of this ordinance. And the staff recommends approval. Now, the next item. Oops, is that it? Sorry. Here we go. And slide. So in association with and as a result of our review of our ordinances, working with the adoption of the new maps, we determined that chapter 94 had some redundant language. So this is a text amendment that we're requesting that will take some of this language that's redundant out of chapter 94. And in most of this language, well, all the pertinent language was actually moved to the chapter 18. So basically, we took the text amendment to the planning board, and they reviewed it, and basically, we're revising chapter 94 of the section 94, 611 of the city's Code of Ordinances, which provides general definitions and then several other items here. The text amendment would eliminate terms which have been discontinued and are no longer applicable to the zoning and land development regulations, having been moved over to the chapter 18. So the planning board met and reviewed our text amendment and approved by unanimous vote, and the staff recommends approval of ordinance 511724.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Okay, if not. If not, I will entertain a motion first on 9.1.
Mayor, move approval of ordinance number 511624 on first reading and schedule second reading for November 25th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5116-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, adopting the Federal Emergency Management Agency's 2024 Flood Insurance Study and Flood Insurance Rate Map for Palm Beach County, including the City of West Palm Beach, amending the West Palm Beach Code of Ordinances to adopt changes to chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations at Article 2 Building Code, Sections 18-33, 1834, and 1835, to adopt technical amendments to the Florida Building Code and amendments to Article 7 Flood Plane Management at Sections 18, 281, 18, 282, 18, 284, 18, 289, 18, 292, 18, 293, 18, 295, and 18, 296, to comply with the flood insurance study, providing for codification, providing for a severability clause and a conflicts clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now entertain a motion on 9.2.
Mayor, approve ordinance, move to approve ordinance number 511724, amending chapter 94 Zoning and Development Regulations, Article 14 Definitions. The motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all amendment standards found in section 9432 of the city's zoning and land development regulations. And that's Article 19, sorry.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5117-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 19, Section 94-611, definitions to remove definitions of terms no longer applicable and to modify terms regarding flood plane management to comply with the Federal Emergency Management Agency's requirements. Declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, a codification clause, and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.3. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5119-24, approving a third amendment to the consolidated and amended lease between the City of West Palm Beach and West Palm Beach Marina, Inc., with the Waterview Towers condominium association, to extend the expiration date from May 10th, 2073, to May 9th, 2123, establishing rents for the extended period and creating rent credits applicable to the lease, and public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5120-24, approving a fifth amendment of lease for the extended submerged Marina premises. Madam City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Kimberly Rothenberg presenting ordinance number 511924 and 512024 to you this evening for your consideration. Ordinance 511924 is an ordinance permitting an amendment to the upland property located at 400 North Flagler Drive, which is known as the Waterview Towers. Ordinance number 512024 is an ordinance that approves the amendment to the sovereign submerged land leased area that is leased from the state to the city and then subleased to leisure resorts. So why are we here? How did we end up here? The city, after engaging in mediation for some litigation that's been pending since 2014, sat down with leisure, Waterview, and the city, and we developed a non-binding term sheet. That non-binding term sheet required that we all engage in negotiations and bring forward to our respective boards several documents. The two lease amendments that are here this evening, a walkway easement, a riparian rights easement, and a settlement agreement. Because the lease amendments that are being proposed are dealing with terms that exceed five years, those lease amendments are adopted through ordinance that requires two readings. This is the first reading that we're talking about tonight. And to help you understand what we're talking about, if you look at the picture that's above, the bottom of the area here is the uplands that I was talking about. That's the area that's under the consolidated and amended lease that's being proposed to be amended. Together with these purple shaded areas, these are guest, not guesstimation, estimations of the area where the city's original docks used to be located. The water side or the submerged land, what we refer to as submerged land, is in fact owned by the City of West Palm Beach. And those submerged areas together with this upland are the consolidated and amended lease areas. This remaining area here is a sovereign submerged land lease area that the city leases from the state and then subleases to leisure. So the proposed amendment to the consolidated amended lease is attached, the proposed amendment is attached to the agenda item, but in summary, the major amendments are an extension of the current expiration date from May 10th of 2073 to May 9th of 2173, which adds an additional 50 years to the term. It removes the city's first right of, removes the first right of refusal to amend because it's no longer needed as we enter into the extension. It changes the rent that will be due and payable beginning on the extension term to 1.5% above the annual rent that's due at the end of the current term. And it also grants a rent credit of $2.5 million that would be applied annually starting October 1, 2025, to Waterview in exchange for a walkway easement that will be available and open to the public for using that waterside pedestrian walkway. And here-
Before moving off that slide, I believe you have the wrong dates in that second bullet. The ex, the new expiration date should be 2123, not 2173.
You are correct, Mayor. It is 2123. I apologize for that. And that's what the lease document actually says, 2123.
All right.
Here is the, outlined in green is the walkway easement area that will be open to the public from dawn to dusk. And then also, in the settlement agreement that will come to you for your consideration on second reading, you see an area here outlined in purple. That's additional common area that's leased to Waterview Towers. And in the documentation, there is an agreement that should the city decide to extend the walkway through to the Flagler Memorial Bridge or to Flagler Drive, that this, that they too would grant an additional extension for that purpose. And then there's parameters around what that would look like. That will be in the settlement agreement. And here, the consolidated amended lease here is set to expire, the, excuse me, the extended submerged land lease is currently set to expire 2107. The proposed amendment to that lease would allow us to work with the state to extend the state lease to match the term of the upland lease. It also would then remove some of the provisions that allow for the residential piece to default over to leisure resorts because it won't be needed. It removes section 6 and 7, which granted the city the authority to terminate the lease on the 80th year because that will no longer be needed as the leases will expire at the same time. And following this presentation, staff would recommend approval of ordinance number 511924 and 512024 on first reading and schedule second reading for November 25th, 2024, when you will see also the easement documents, the settlement agreement, and the second reading of these lease amendments.
Thank you for that presentation. So this agreement is settling on litigation that is currently ongoing, correct?
Yes, Mayor. We have currently pending three lawsuits outstanding that have been outstanding since 2014.
Okay.
One of which raises questions with regard to the riparian right and the operation of the marina. The purpose is to put all of that to rest, to dismiss all of those lawsuits with prejudice, each party to bear their own fees and costs and to go forward unified with the operation of the marina, the Waterview Tower residential piece in the city.
And this settlement does not require the city to pay any monies?
There is only a rent credit, well, to take that back, there's a rent credit of $2.5 million that would be payable through the consolidated amended lease agreement, and that's for the purposes of opening the walkway up to the public pedestrian. So it's not an actual payment. There's also a $25,000, an agreement to pay $25,000 in reimbursement for some beautification, landscaping, for landscaping that was removed when the bridge was improved.
So rent credits and a $25,000?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I have a few questions. But first, I want to start by thanking you so much for that very thorough explanation. I've spent a good amount of time on the phone with you going over this, and I appreciate just being, making sure that it's clear to the public of what we're doing today. But I have a few just questions of clarification. The first is that we are not giving away ownership of anything in either of these documents. We are just leasing the extension of the lease.
Correct. The fee, what we call fee title, to the underlying upland and submerged land that the city owns will remain with the city, but it will be leased to Waterview Towers through the lease agreement and through the extended term, assuming that it gets adopted on second reading and passes the 31 days that happens after that.
There was one point of concern that I heard from several residents that was written in the agenda, that a portion of the sovereign submerged land not included in the extended lease. Can you clarify that is not an expansion of the marina? That is, I think legally is that maybe-
Correct, I will. And it's actually the opposite. So currently, the way the lease is written, it's just making clear that these finger piers, these areas that are owned by the city already, they're not part of the state lease, therefore, they're not part of the sovereign submerged land lease. So they're being accepted out of the sovereign submerged land. The sovereign submerged land that's being leased is the area that's outlined here. It's not being expanded or changed from what's currently leased by the city from the state. We can't give anything more than we've leased from the state.
Yes, Court?
Thank you. So earlier tonight, when we had Ms. Fario discussing the updates about the presentation for the waterfront, one of the things that came out of that, I know we took walks with some of the stakeholders several months ago, and one of the things they were most excited about was the idea of connecting bridge to bridge, being able to extend the Flagler walkway going directly to the north bridge. Right now, there's currently a dog park from the Waterview Towers, but I believe you stated that part of the agreement would be allowing the city to, that they might move the dog park so that the city could could open the access directly to the bridge. However, it's not actually up to either of these parties. It's FDOT or some other party that we'd have to get additional approval from. But is that correct? More or less?
Right. Currently, we talked about this area outlined in purple. This is the dog park that you talked about. There is a provision in the settlement agreement that should the city desire to extend the walkway over to the bridge or to Flagler Drive, whichever is engineeringally feasible, which I don't know, and we would have to go through that exercise in the redesign or the expansion. But that the city would move this dog park over to the other side of the tennis courts so that the throughway could be created as part of the cost of the expansion of the walkway.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Any other follow up? Any other questions, comment? All right, we do have a couple of cards. Mike Schmidt and Cynthia Nally. Want to approach the podium, please?
Hi, I'm Mike Schmidt. Just a question for the city attorney. When this-
Sir, make statements. We're not really asking questions here. So if you want to just either ask a generally, but don't expect an immediate comeback, so.
Gotcha.
Feel free to state your question for the record.
Okay, I'll just ask the question then after, after the meeting. So I'll resign my time. Thank you.
Okay. Cynthia Nally?
Good evening, Cynthia Nally, 600 South Dixie Highway Downtown. I'm really happy to hear about the dog park and the relocating of it. And that was basically my point here, is that for a while, we've really been trying to reinvigorate the area around Jose Marti Park. And I want to thank you very much for the fitness equipment that was put there. But what's happening now, because that pedestrian walkway kind of deadens into that dog park, you can't get out, like, there's no real reason to walk that way because once you get there, you can only turn around and leave. And then you can't even cut through the parking lot anymore to go to Jose Marti or any of the parks because there's new fencing that's been put up with no trespassing signs. And I understand maybe they're doing some construction or whatever. But there's also a lot of other signs by the garage, like no trespassing. So, you know, as we're looking at all of this, I realize that, you know, we would have to get FDOT involved to really create this bridge to bridge walkway. But there's so much value in that, in branding that, in the same way that Palm Beach has branded their lake trail. And I think it would be a huge asset to the downtown. And, you know, FDOT has done some amazing things for the community. For instance, they proactively had the artist on tap to repaint the mural of the girl under the bridge after they repainted the bridge. I mean, that's pretty incredible. So if they're willing to do that, maybe they're willing to work with us to have this bridge to bridge asset. And I think it's, it's super important, and it shouldn't get lost here because $2.5 million a year is too much to pay for. because $2.5 million a year is too much to pay for a dead-end walkway. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 51-19-24 on first reading and schedule a second reading for November 25th, 2024. Second.
It's been moved in second and discussion. Hearing on, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 51-19-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, approving a third amendment to the consolidated and amended lease between the City of West Palm Beach and the, and West Palm Beach Marina Incorporated, now the Waterview Towers Condemning and Association Incorporated, to extend the expiration date to May 9th, 21/23, establishing rents and credits, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. Um, Madam City Attorney, since this requires a vote of four, should we do a roll call?
It, it's not necessary, Mayor.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, a motion carries unanimously by the four commissioners who are here. Commissioner Fox?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 51-20-24 on first reading and schedule a second reading for November 25th, 2024.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and discussion. Hearing on, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 51-20-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, approving a fifth amendment of lease for extended submerged marina premises between the city and Leisure Resorts LLC to allow for a term extension under certain conditions, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously by the four commissioners who are here. Thank you. Item 9.4. Public hearing and first reading ordinance number 51-12-24 for a future land use FLU map amendment to change the FLU designation of an approximately 9.897 acre tract located 1101 South Flagler Drive from the existing Community Services CS FLU designation to a multifamily MF FLU designation. Who is presenting?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. For the record, Harvey Sawyer of Shetland Bone on behalf of Family Church. I am privileged to be here tonight on behalf of Family Church with a multi-part request. A little confusing, so I will try to lay all that out for you in a moment. But before I do that, I'd like to invite the pastor of Family Church, Jimmy Scroggins, to come forward and share with you what the vision is that we're trying to create here before I complicate it with what the legal requests are. So with that, I'll ask Pastor Scroggins to come forward.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Thank you for having us this evening. As many of you already know, our church was established in 1901, one of the-
Although Mr. Sawyer did identify, if you could just state your name for the-
I'm sorry, my name's Jimmy Scroggins. I am the pastor at Family Church.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, our church was established in 1901 on Clematis by a group of about 14 people who made it in a rented space. And they decided way back then that our city needed a church like ours. We're one of the oldest religious institutions in this city. We're one of the largest, if not the largest, religious institution in the city. And for all these years, our church has sought to be a great partner in this city. And we're proud of our city and we're honored to be a part of it. And we're excited about the opportunities that are here and that are coming. A lot of it's due to, to your leadership. One of the things that we've done in our city that we're really proud of is we've been a part of the educational fabric of the city for families in our city. Over 50 years ago, for the last 50 years, we've had some form of a day school operating right there on Flagler Drive. And we're in a mode of expansion and intensifying our educational efforts. Our church was instrumental in establishing Palm Beach Atlantic University back in the late 60s. It was a really small school back then, but now it's grown into something really significant and important in this region and in this nation. We're one of the only, if not the only accredited preschools east of 95. So we have over 100 bedbabies and infants. No one else can do that. That's very important for the working people who work downtown. And our goal is to expand all of this. So, uh, if we're able to do this partnership with the related group and we're able to move all of this forward, we'll have a greater opportunity to establish increased, have an increased enrollment in our preschool, increase enrollment in our elementary school. We'll have an increased enrollment with our middle school kids. And one day, we hope to have a state-of-the-art urban high school right here in downtown West Palm Beach on Flagler Drive. That'll be one of the premier private high schools in America when we're able to do that. And this partnership makes that dream potentially possible. As terms of our church, our church is committed to building families. You know very well that if people are able to have strong marriages, they can have strong families. And that provides the, the greatest platform to raise strong children, healthy children who become productive members of this community. We've been doing that since 1901. We intend to continue to do it. And, uh, that's a really important part of this, of this conversation because there are just not that many institutions in downtown West Palm Beach that are explicitly committed to helping people get married in the right way, stay married in a healthy way, raise their children in a healthy way. That's what we do at Family Church. There's some logistical issues that this partnership does address. For instance, parking is a big deal in downtown. You know that. If you ever come to our church, our church is growing. Thousands of people attend our church every weekend on Flagler Drive. There's not enough parking. There's people parking everywhere, places they should park and sometimes places they shouldn't. We're going to be able to expand our parking because of this opportunity. And that's really important for the people who attend our church, most of whom live in West Palm Beach. It'll also create expanded parking opportunities potentially for Palm Beach Atlantic University during the week. They're expanding and growing as well. And having greater parking opportunities for them is really important, of course. If we have residents living on a portion of our property downtown, that'll increase tax revenue, which will benefit all of us because it'll allow the city to provide the services that we all need. The bottom line is that our church has been here since 1901. That means that people had dreams and ideas of what could happen that have lasted for over 120, almost 125 years. This city's still going to be here in 21/25. Our church will still be here in 21/25. This school will be still, will still be here educating children in 21/25. Our church planted our flag here in downtown West Palm Beach in 1901. This opportunity allows us to reimagine our campus, reset our campus for another century of ministry and service to this community. So I hope that you guys will support it. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. So I am going to, um, walk you through what the requests are. Uh, you know the site well. It's almost a 10-acre site. It's, I think, 9.89 acres in size. And you will notice that it is dominated by a large asphalt parking lot, not the best use of perhaps the most valuable real estate in Florida, perhaps the nation. And if you were, go back, uh, I don't know, 10-plus years ago when, uh, the church owned the, uh, the chapel by the lake, today, the Bristol, they had a vision for how can we better serve our, our purpose and our mission in the community? And they decided to sell it. And what a game changer that was for all of us. Not just the community, because the Bristol became, I think, the launching point for where we find ourselves today. Dispelling the myth that, you know, no one from Palm Beach would ever want to live in West Palm Beach. But it was a game changer for the church. Because Jimmy took, he's humble about this, but he took a struggling church with a diminishing congregation. And he grew it so large with so many young people, they had to rename it from First Baptist to Family Church. And you have how many campuses now?
17.
17 churches around Florida. They used the sales proceeds from Chapel by the Lake to reinvigorate their purpose. And their purpose was not to own land on the water. Their purpose was to do exactly what Jimmy described. This is another one of those opportunities for them. Turning an asphalt parking lot into something that can better serve us, like the Bristol did, and better serve the church as that example of going from one, you know, aging, diminishing population church to a 17-church operation. So that's the big vision here. And they, uh, took a lot of time selecting who they wanted to partner with. They actually had an RFP and allowed a number of developers to come bid to be their development partner in this endeavor. And the team of the Frisbee family and what is now known as Related Ross were selected. So this is a joint effort of those three organizations. And it is going to result, hopefully, with your approval in the historic church building that we all identify with the church being renovated and remaining there and the patchwork of other buildings around it that have been built over time incrementally that don't serve its present purposes to be completely reimagined while monetizing not only for the church, but for us, the public, all of that asphalt parking by turning that into something that generates tax revenue of the highest order, which presently does not. So, uh, these are the existing conditions. You can see on the upper portion, this is the completion of Forte Project to the south. At the south end of the parking lot is what looks like a habitable building, but that is actually overflow parking for the Bristol, which will be replaced on this site. There was, I don't know, 24, 25 years left on that lease. So Bristol was going to run out of parking at some point. Uh, we've solved that problem for them by giving them a very long-term parking solution in return for amending this lease to allow the development that I'm going to share with you. On the right-hand side of your screen, you will see three buildings in blue that are to be demolished. And those are the Bristol parking garage, the auxiliary garage that I mentioned. And in the northern part around the church building, that patchwork of buildings that were cobbled together over time as the church grew. The building that remains is the historic sanctuary. So we have a whole bunch of requests in front of you this evening. Sounds complicated, but it, it's not, and I will better explain. But our first request is a flu amendment from Community, from Community Service CS, which is its current flu, to MF, which will help get us where we want to be. Uh, we will, that's actually your item 9.4. So we will stop after that part of the presentation, allow you to take an up or down vote. And if it is an up vote, we will then proceed to the remainder of these items, which will be 10.1, um, a right-of-way abandonment for Chadbourne Court. And then 10.2, which is terminating the existing zoning, which is in the form of a CSPD for the church, and instead rezoning that to MF 32 with a further rezoning to residential plan development. All of those, except the right-of-way abandonment, require two votes. So we would then come back, uh, in 13 days, on the Monday of Thanksgiving week, for a second reading of everything except the abandonment. And you would also then vote on the site plan with waivers. So if I haven't confused you yet, um, let's walk through those one at a time. The first and the one that we're going to stop and vote on, uh, Agenda Item 9.4, is changing the flu from its existing, uh, community service, which you'll see in green. And this is our site. And our green is surrounded by PBAU's, um, community service. And, uh, it is surrounded by other multifamily. And we are requesting to take it from green to brown, which would make it multifamily. So with that, I've been instructed that we need to stop here and vote separately on that because this is not quasi-judicial. I don't know if the staff would like to make a presentation, but it's very straightforward.
Before staff comes up, any questions for Mr. Sawyer before he takes his seat on this item? Okay, staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner members, members of the public. Louis Vicentini, Senior Planner, for the record, City of West Palm Beach Planning Zone Division. I commend the applicant for the great presentation tonight, for the future land use and the introduction, as well as the pastor. Thanks for coming. I'm going to be very brief on my presentation since he's done a great job doing his part of the presentation. So according to staff's findings and, uh, analysis, we came to conclusion that the request for the future land use amendment complies with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. It is in accordance with the procedures of Chapter 94-33 of the City of West Palm Beach Planning, a comprehensive plan. It complies with Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy 115 with the change assumptions. Therefore, the recommendation for approval for the future land use from CS to MF. That concludes this part of the presentation, staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, um, we do have some cards. Uh, we have a couple of cards. They do not wish to speak, but they want their comments read. Ben Leoni, uh, says, "I support this project as the site will improve the connection between the northern and southern quarters of the downtown." Another card from a Christian tabernilla, uh, does not wish to speak, but says, "I support this project as I believe it will improve my hometown of West Palm Beach." Uh, we do have two cards from persons who want to speak. So they can start making their way toward the podium. Ashanta Williamson and Kira Hester. I apologize if I mispronounced that name.
It's okay. Um, good evening, Mayor James and Commissioners. I am here. Ashante Williamson here in support of the application before you by Family Church. The vision outlined tonight has many benefits for our city. The project will forever connect our community through faith, worship, education, and service and provide Family Church the resources needed to fulfill their mission and vision for the next 100 years. The project brings education and early childhood development services to our city, adds millions to the city's tax role, and creates a walkable, connected green space along the waterfront. The project's residential components match the character and height of the buildings nearby and ensure the church is treated fairly compared to its neighbors. Please support this proposal by Family Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Kira Hester?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Kira Hester and I'm also here in support of the Family Church project. Um, when you have something that's been in your community, um, for 100 years plus, I think it's a no-brainer. So, um, I'm not here to hold anyone alone, but I do want to stand in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, those are all the cards. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5112-24, changing the future land use designation of plus or minus 9.897 acres of land located at 1101 South Flagler Drive from Community Service CS to multifamily MF, future land use designation. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the amendment complies with the provisions of Chapter 163 Florida statutes and the Florida Administrative Code, FAC, and is in accordance, accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. Additionally, the proposed amendment meets the future land use, the flu amendment justification standards found in Future Land Use Element Policy 1.15 and 1.16 of the city's comprehensive plan based on changed assumptions or assumption and the applicable provisions of Section 94-33 of the Land Development Regulations.
Second.
It's been moved in second and discussion. Hearing on, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5112-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by changing the future land use designation of an approximately 9.897 acre parcel generally located at 1101 South Flagler Drive from Community Service to a multifamily future land use designation, declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, now we will turn to, uh, the quasi-judicial portion of the meeting. Uh, so Commissioners, uh, I will need you to make your disclosures. I will make mine as well since I may have to vote. And we will begin with- And we will begin with Commissioner Lambert.
Are we disclosing on ten point three as well?
Ten point three is going to be continued.
Do we want? Okay. Okay. So as to items ten point one and ten point two, I have had expert communications with the applicant and applicant's representatives. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
President Ward?
As to matters, ten point one and ten point two, I have had expert communications with the applicant, applicant's representative. I have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. As to items ten point one and ten point two, I have had expert communications with the applicant as well as the applicant's representative. I have not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, and not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Fox?
As to items ten point one and ten point two, I have had expert communications with the applicant and the representatives. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As I said, I will make my disclosure in the event I have to vote, if there's a tie. As to items ten point one and ten point two, I have had expert communications with the applicant. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Now, Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items nine point one, I mean, I'm sorry, ten point one and ten point two, please stand your right and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, very good. I'm going to read items ten point one and ten point two because I understand there's a single presentation for both of those. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so let me read those into the record, and then you can go to your presentation. Item ten point one, Public Hearing of Resolution Number two-twenty-four-dash-twenty-four. A request by David Harrison, agent of Related Company, and Tyler Woolsey, agent of Urban Design Studio, on behalf of Family Church One LLC, the owner, for the abandonment of a zero-point-two-six-one acre or eleven-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-five square foot portion of the Chadbourne Court right-of-way located east of and perpendicular to South Olive Avenue. And item ten point two, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number fifty-one-thirteen-dash-twenty-four regarding a termination of the First Baptist Church Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, located generally at eleven-oh-one South Flagler Drive, and amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach to rezone the approximately nine point eight-nine-seven acre former Family Church site from Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, to Community Service, CS, zoning designation, and Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number fifty-one-fourteen-dash-twenty-four regarding a rezoning of plus or minus nine point eight-nine-seven acres located generally at eleven-oh-one South Flagler Drive from Community Service, CS, to multifamily high-density MF thirty-two zoning designation with a further rezoning to a residential plan development, RPD. Mr.?
One more, Mayor. Resolution.
I'm sorry?
There's a resolution for discussion as well.
Okay. Discussion of Resolution Number two-twenty-five-dash-twenty-four regarding the establishment of the development regulations and conditions of the Residential Plan Development, RPD, and the granting of waivers from the zoning and land development regulations. The above referenced requests are being made by David Harrison, agent of Related Company, and Tyler Woolsey, agent of Urban Design Studio, on behalf of Family Church One LLC, the owner, for the redevelopment of the First Baptist Church with a mixed-use development comprised of a new church with school campus, multifamily residential units with two parking garages, and restaurant uses. Okay, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So trying to take those in order, the first would be to terminate the existing CSPD, which is the current zoning on the church site. So before we can rezone it, we need to terminate the existing PD, which is the zoning. And you can vote on those separately. I'll present this as one entire package because I don't imagine you want to terminate that until you've seen what we propose to replace it with. So the next request would be rezoning from that terminated CSPD, which you see here in blue, this is the site, to this color, not sure what that color is, some sort of green grayish color, but it is to MF thirty-two with a further rezoning to residential plan development. So that is the next request, is the rezoning after the CSPD is terminated. Now, in order to get us from MF thirty-two to RPD, we need a particular waiver. And that waiver is because your code requires a minimum of ten acres to have an RPD. I've never seen one that has actually been ten acres. This is the closest we've ever been, and one that I've worked on, it is nine point eight-nine-seven acres, which compare it to its peer group on South Flagler Drive. You can see South Flagler House, which you granted the waiver was three point four acres. The Bristol, you granted the waiver was three point two. Leclerc, two point five. Forte, our neighbor to the south, one point three. In all of those cases, you granted the waiver, but we do need to have a waiver in order to rezone to RPD. These are the standards for rezoning found in Section ninety-four dash thirty-two A of your code. We believe we comply with all of these standards. So does your staff, and so did a unanimous planning board. Happy to come back to these if you have particular questions. The next part of the request, and the only thing that is being heard once instead of twice, is the abandonment of a publicly-owned right-of-way called Chadbourne Court, which runs from Olive Avenue to Nowhere. It runs into the middle of our parking lot, private property. And for the privilege of purchasing that from you for three point nine million dollars, which inures to the benefit of the public, we would then propose to create a road from Olive to Flagler that the public can use at no cost to the city. So, you know, to state that differently, presently, the public owns a road to Nowhere, a dead end into private property. We propose at our expense, after paying you three point nine million dollars for the privilege of doing this, is building a road that does connect Flagler to Olive, and we pay to build it, and we pay to maintain it in perpetuity, and everyone else gets to drive on it. I think that's a heck of a deal for the public. So that is our next request. These are the standards of review for a right-of-way abandonment. They are found in Section seventy-eight dash two-seventeen of your code. We believe we comply with all of them. Staff agrees, and so did planning board. So let's talk about the more exciting stuff, which is what is the development program to go on that asphalt parking lot? Well, it's an integrated project. These are not two separate projects. It is one integrated whole, which is a remarkable piece of design to let the church accomplish what it needs to accomplish, allow the developer to accomplish what it needs to accomplish to make all of this work. And it is a true mixed-use project with a renovated historic sanctuary, new worship and classroom spaces with room to expand. The Palm Beach Christian Academy and campus and the daycare stay in place, which I cannot emphasize how critical that is for downtown. Any of you that have had young children, I know many employees in the city hall have utilized this. When a child is newborn, there are only a few licensed facilities to take that child. So if you are a working parent, you are stuck unless you're lucky enough to have Family Church a few blocks away from where you work. That's where my daughter went, and I know other people in this room have had their child there. And I cannot overemphasize how critical that is to our downtown because there are no other newborn licensed facilities east of ninety-five in our city. And it's a great service that the church is willing to expand that. The development portion of this is a hundred and ninety multifamily units in two different towers. I will tell you that the site under MF thirty-two zoning is allowed to have three hundred and nineteen units, which means we're leaving a hundred and twenty-nine units on the table. This was not an exercise by the church to see how much they could squeeze in. It was an exercise to see how can we build the church and school of the next hundred years and no more. It includes an activation on Flagler Drive of a restaurant, which I think the public has been calling for for some time. We have miles of waterfrontage and almost no waterfront restaurants to go to, and this is an opportunity to cure that, not just for the neighborhood, but everyone in the city. And as Pastor Scroggins referenced, the parking, we are increasing the parking on the site pretty dramatically to provide for this future growth. This is a view looking from the north parking lot of the proposed campus back towards the church. So you'd be looking towards the southeast with the steeple of the historic structure, the new classrooms and worship area, a large foyer area. This is all new. You can see the north of the, the northern of the two towers in the background. This gives you a feel for what the ground plane will look like on the north side, and that's important. All four sides of every building here is four-sided architecture. No one looks at a back-of-house. So no matter where you live or enter this campus from, you are looking at what you think is the front of the house. All of the height is buried in the center of the campus, so you don't feel it if you're on Olive or Flagler. This tells you about the church's development program. This is an aerial view, existing church to remain. All of this is new. Two playgrounds on Olive are new. Large public green space that exceeds code is along Flagler to extend your public greenway along Flagler. And this is surface parking together with structured parking with a bridge over the road, so the church's parking increases rather dramatically. I wanted to put this slide in because I know we're all familiar with schools that cause car backups onto the public roadway. And I wanted to provide assurance to you and the public that that will not be the case here. So I'm providing to you the school pickup and drop-off circulation, which is off Flagler, and it has a circular queuing system with five car pickup and drop-off at a time. Thirty-five vehicles can stack in this line inside our property boundaries, more than needed, so we are never spilling onto Flagler Drive. You can see that the drop-off times are spread over an hour and a half period, so they're not all coming at the same time, and it starts before the peak AM traffic hour. And the pickup at the end of the day is also spread over a long period of time that is outside of at least most of the PM peak. So this was very thoughtfully designed to have no impact on the public using Flagler Now, this is a view from Olive Avenue at PBAU, looking east across Olive, back at the new church facility, with this large central atrium and the two wings of integrated classrooms, Sunday School, church administration, beautiful design, large public open gathering space. It will be a terrific complement to what PBAU is planning across the street in terms of public realm. Here is that same view that I think I showed a moment ago, looking from the northern parking lot. This is the queuing, this is where the students are dropped off and picked up. So there's room for five attended-by-adults drop-off and pickup locations, so they can drop off and pick up five students at a time. Now, this is from Olive Avenue, looking due east from about where PBAU's New Rinker School of Business will be that's under construction. And it's looking down that new public road that I referenced we will construct. Church on your left, which is the north, church's parking structure on the right with a bridge connection, so everyone is out of the weather, and then the northern of the two buildings behind it. Now, let's talk about the residential development. As I stated, it's a hundred and ninety dwelling units divided between two buildings, a twenty-seven-story building and a twenty-three-story building. It's a mix of units, very large range from one-bedroom to five-bedroom. It will have a restaurant at the base of the north building on Flagler Drive, which I will illustrate in a moment. It has a five-story shared parking garage that is completely masked with architecture, so it does not look like a parking garage, with a large amenity deck that serves both the residents of both buildings. This is the aerial view. So you have the north tower at twenty-seven stories, the south tower at twenty-three stories. They share a large valet-molter court. They share that five-story parking garage that does not look like a parking garage from the street. They share an amenity deck here, a tennis court here. This is the church's parking, except for the top floor, there's some excess parking for the residential. The church parking has its access on the north side and on the west side. Resident-only entrance to the residential parking garage, meaning you need a key fob or a transponder to get in. Anyone who uses the restaurant valets over here, or if you're a resident, you can come enter the parking garage from this side as well. So two ways in and out of both garages. This is the restaurant proposed for the ground floor of the northern of the two buildings. This is a view from Flagler Drive, looking southeast. It completely activates this part of Flagler Drive, and notice what the greenway looks like. Your code requires a twenty-five-foot setback for the building face off of Flagler Drive, but as you know, your staff has consistently asked for seventy feet. This meets the seventy feet with improvements, very high quality. You know what you're going to get. You were all at the ribbon cutting for Julian Abel Park last Friday, and you saw the quality of that. This will be of similar quality. Now, in order to qualify for an RPD, we not only needed the ten-acre minimum or a waiver, we also need to demonstrate innovative land planning, architecture, development techniques that are beyond the standard cookie-cutter requirements of a zoning code, and I'd like to share those with you. Through this design, we are preserving one of the city's most important houses of worship in its location, so they don't have to sell and move far west of town. They stay where we need them. We create this green corridor, which, as you know, stretches from the North Bridge through what you were talking about before, the old fishing club in front of North Bridge Center where the Chamber of Commerce is, Jose Marti in front of the Catholic Church all the way down, and so that it doesn't end at the one Flagler building, the Julian Abel Park. It will continue at Southward March, so that the public not only has public access on the water side of Flagler, they also have a wide greenway park system on the west side of Flagler, putting a lot of breathing room on Flagler Drive. It's mixed-use urban infill development, one of the policies of the city, four-sided architecture I mentioned. No more surface parking in the main portion of it, only on the northern portion, all integrated and masked. All of the back-of-house operations are internalized. No one's going to have, you know, garbage and generators and, you know, the back-of-house operations in their public view. And we think much improved vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Presently, unless you want to trespass through Family Church's parking lot, you have to go around to get from Flagler to Olive. We've solved that problem for the public, making it much more porous and accessible for all. This is that public greenway that I mentioned. Again, your code requires twenty-five-foot setback off of Flagler. Your staff has very consistently required all of our peer group of buildings to be at seventy. We are at seventy, except up here, we're actually at ninety-six feet of setback. Some total of our nine point eight-nine acres, over an acre of it, will go back to the public as a public greenway. Community benefits, I think I've already spoken to all of these. I have not spoken directly to the property values and tax revenue, but it's quite substantial because you're now monetizing half of the campus. I'll note that because this is not in the CRA, all of that money is available to be spent at your discretion anywhere in the city. It doesn't have to be spent in any particular part of the city. We've conducted community outreach with our neighbors, and I'm delighted to say that our neighbors have either written a letter of support or they state that they're not in opposition. Kind of a rare occurrence to propose- Kind of a rare occurrence to propose something of this magnitude and not have a full commission chambers of people opposed to it. And I give the credit to Family Church for being a great neighbor for all these years and to the related team, because they are the highest-quality builder in our community. And I think people have a sense of comfort knowing that they're going to build best-in-class. So we enjoy a staff recommendation of approval, subject to conditions, and we agree with the conditions. We were fortunate to receive unanimous support from the planning board. And now I would like to actually, that concludes that portion, but I'd like to walk through the waivers, so you know what they are. You will officially vote on those next time, but I think it's better to give you a complete package of what we're asking for, so we're not asking you to vote on abandonments and rezonings and terminations of PDs, not knowing what the ultimate product is. I thought this graphic might be helpful because it places the two buildings in the context of the other buildings that are either already built or under construction. This is LaClara, which is topped off and will be open soon. Here is the Bristol, Trionon, the two proposed buildings, South Flagler Houses, two buildings that are under construction. So you'll see that the face of South Flagler Drive has changed rather dramatically in the last decade or so. The point being that these buildings are not out of context with its peer group, and in fact, they're, you know, not as tall as several of them. We have seven waiver requests, the first of which I've already covered, which is the minimum acreage for the RPD. Let me quickly cover the other six, and we can come back to any of them, but they should be straightforward. The first one, we've covered. The second are side setback waivers, and let me share with you where they are. We meet the side setbacks on most of the proposed project, except in these locations. And I think it's most helpful to give you the next slide, so you can see what they are. The blue is where we meet or exceed. The red is where we're seeking a waiver from you. These are not variances, they're waivers, which an RPD permits. And you will see where the most substantial ones are. They are in this area. The most affected property neighbors Memorial Presbyterian Church, which has submitted a letter of support of the project and of the proposed variances, that is in your record. You'll see that the 23-story building, this gives you the total height, the 27-story building, which is buried more in the center of the campus, is the taller of the two buildings, and the pinch points are here. It's kind of unique that the property is not rectangular. It dips down with this finger, which is what creates the need for most of the required variance or waivers. And I'm happy to come back to these, but I'll go through each of these. The second is access points. We presently have seven access points off of public roads. We propose to have seven, but that's more than what your current code allows when they were put in. It met the code today. It does not meet the code. So seven today, seven tomorrow. The only difference is today there are three access points on Olive, four on Flagler, and we propose to flip-flop that. So let me show you what that would look like. So the existing condition, as I said, is three on Olive, four on Flagler, and we propose to eliminate one of these on Flagler and move it over to Olive, and let me demonstrate why that is. This is the proposal, and then we'll put them side-by-side, so you can see the difference. And these access points are for the road that runs across the top of the property. It is there today. It'll be there tomorrow. These access points are where the new road will go, which roughly equates to this, and Chadbourne, which we'll put it up here at the new road, so those stay the same. The difference is here. The access point here on Flagler will remain. One of these will remain, and a new one will be added because we wanted to have a separate entrance for the deliveries from the people driving their cars in and out at the church. This is actually one big drive aisle, believe it or not. We just put a very enlarged pedestrian refuge or safety zone in between, but imagine the moving trucks, moving people in and out of these buildings, the deliveries, the back-of-house. We don't want them coming in contact with the, with the church users. So that is where we moved the other access point to. We also have a driveway separation issue, meaning that driveways are not far enough apart according to your code. This is an existing condition. This northern road, which stays where it is today under the proposal, is only five-and-a-half feet away from PBAU's access point. We're not changing that. It's an existing nonconformity, and we propose to leave it in place. Same thing with this 33-foot separation on Olive. Those are both existing access points. Those are not changing. Those remain. The ones that we are creating is the one that I just referenced. It is by putting this safety separation area between one large drive aisle and to the church parking garage. That creates a 21-foot separation issue here, and it creates a separation issue from Memorial Presbyterian's parking lot that would not exist if we made it all one big drive aisle, but for safety and aesthetic purposes, we divided them. And the final waivers are the setback from Olive of the playgrounds. We have two separate playgrounds for two different age groups, and the measurement is from our property line to the playground. And we actually have more separation than what the code accounts for. Let me better illustrate that for you with the cross-section. This is Olive Avenue. This is the curb. There's then six feet of landscaping, eight feet of sidewalk, 10 feet of landscaping, and then our five-foot wall. So when you add that up, there is 24 feet of separation from the curb of the road until you get to the wall, which is the western edge of those two playgrounds. But that's not where it gets measured from. It gets measured from the property line, which is right here on the inboard side of your sidewalk. So technically, we have only 10 feet of separation. The reality is we have 24 feet of separation and a lot of protection and safety for the kids. So the waivers that we have requested, seven of them, the review standards are found in Section 94-273A2 of your code. We believe we comply with all of them. Staff agrees. Planning board agrees. I'm not going to go through the site development history. I do want to mention that one of the approval requirements for you approving the site plan is that there are adequate levels of service of every type of public service. You can see what they are: drainage, water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, school, and traffic. We have concurrency letters for all of these. We meet all of the LOS standards. I'm happy to go through shadow studies if you want, but this normally pertains to neighbors that are upset with your proposed project. That is not the situation we find ourselves in. I don't know, Tyler, do we need to go through any of this? I think that is everything that you need to see to understand the project. Again, you're not voting on the site plan this evening. You are voting on everything else this evening, but I thought it'd be helpful to put it in the context of what we're actually proposing to do. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my presentation. Stand ready for questions, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oyer. Before we go to staff, I need to talk to you or Mr. Scroggins. Do you all have any kind of scholarship program for these schools that you're looking to build?
I will let.
I assume they're private schools, correct?
Is Pastor Scroggins no longer here? Kevin, would you like to field that? So Associate Pastor Kevin Mahoney.
Good evening. It's a privilege to be here, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners Kevin Mahoney. Almost 40 years connected with Family Church. We do have scholarship opportunities for students in the Palm Beach Christian Academy that we have historically had over its 50-plus-year history. They're individually examined with parents, and it is our heart's desire to provide scholarship and assistance to families that will need that assistance to become part of our school.
Are you increasing the number of students that you'll be servicing?
Yes, yes. We're hoping to add significantly number of students beyond what we have currently on our campus. And truthfully, I don't have the exact number, but the goal for us is to increase the number of preschool, middle school, elementary school students. The vision is for high school, but right now, our heart's desire and our plan is for this preschool, elementary, and middle school, and add more student opportunities for the city of West Palm Beach residents than we've ever had in the past. And we're hoping to be able to do that with this resource development.
All right. Well, and that's fine. And, Mr. Oyer, before second reading, maybe someone could sit down and meet with me, and I'd like to see details about a scholarship program. I'm all about making West Palm Beach a community of opportunity for all. I would like to see that there are going to be opportunities. I assume this is going to be a state-of-the-art school that you're constructing.
Yes.
With all this money you're getting, it better be. Anyway, so I want to make sure that there's some program in place where boys and girls from other parts of our city can at least have an opportunity to attend this state-of-the-art school, and I'd like to see that in some kind of formal scholarship program that I can get some more details on. So if you could talk to Mr. Scroggins or whoever is involved with those operations to sit down with me and walk me through that, because there's going to be tremendous financial benefit, not only to the church, but to the developers of this program, and I would like to see that some of those benefits are going to be benefiting students who might not otherwise have the financial capability of affording a school as fine as this one is going to be.
Yes, sir. We'll provide that information to you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before we turn to staff? Commissioner Warren.
Thank you very much, Mayor. That was really along the lines of what I was wondering, because when you, Harvey, Mr. Oyer, when you were talking about the daycare opportunities and the very rich background that they have with providing services to infants, I don't know if there's any scholarship opportunities or ways that people of different means may be able to benefit from that, or even if there's an opportunity perhaps to work with another organization in the area that may be able to provide those types of services for people of different income levels. I think there are a lot of ways that the community can benefit from the wonderful things that are happening at Family Church.
I agree, and I wish I had details and could speak to it, but we will by second reading.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Oyer before we turn to staff? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and this is an exciting project and beautiful addition to our city. And I know that you said we're going to be seeing the site plan at a future meeting, but since you did bring it up, I am really appreciative that you all are taking into consideration school pickup circulation and how it affects the neighborhoods, the, you know, folks commuting along South Flagler. I was curious how you determine that 35 cars is ample space?
A traffic engineer determined that based on the maximum student population and the hours of drop-off and what rate they arrive. And so I can answer that at the second reading or invite the traffic engineer, but I am told that it is far more queuing than would ever be needed under an ITE, you know, trip generation manual.
Okay, great, because I think we often see photos from folks who live in some of the towers nearby of traffic backed up along South Flagler. And, you know, I know I was on this day as when we approved the Starbucks on South Dixie, and they assured us that there was enough queuing there, and cars are spilling off onto South Dixie, so we just want to make sure that we're not causing backup, because sir, I think we've all been caught in those school pickup lines. So thank you so much for your attention to that detail. And I also just wanted to make a comment that the public green space is amazing, and I'm really looking forward to that. I think that whenever we have new development coming in or revised development like this, ensuring that we add that green space, it makes such a difference. As you mentioned, in the new park that's downtown, it just, you feel like you're in a new place, and it's, you know, we had some people come to that area from other parts of Palm Beach County and said, wow, this is like a new West Palm Beach, and I really appreciate that effort here. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to add to that because, you know, one of the speaking points historically against tall buildings is it was walling off the public access to the water. And through good design, you can have your cake and eat it too. You can have the residential building, and you can maintain the public access to the waterfront and even create a long, linear, park-like atmosphere the length of your city. So, you know, it's our pleasure to be a contributor to that policy goal.
President Ward.
Since you pointed out that we weren't here for the site plan, I wasn't going to make this comment, but since we started talking about it, and, you know, we did have the event last Friday, and I was one of those people that trespassed on the parking lot, looking for parking in and around the area. And then after the event over the weekend, I rode my bike from the north end all the way down to that area because I just wanted to see the park again, and I wanted to just look at it from the weekend perspective on a bike. And looking at that site plan, I get so excited about what's to come and going all the way down for our waterfront. I love being on that waterfront, and I love the fact that you guys are trying to activate that area. It's so important, on top of the school, everything else. Those little details matter so much to the future of everyone's enjoyment of that waterfront, and so I'm excited for projects like this, and I didn't want to talk too much about the site plan, but overall, I'm very excited about this.
So even though you're not voting, thank you, Commissioner Ward, even though you're not voting on the site plan, let's discuss it, because you know how second readings often go. They're often, you know, perfunctory. So let's discuss any issues. You've now seen the site plan and how it operates and circulates and what the waivers are, so we're delighted to answer any questions that we can, so that, you know, you have a light crowd tonight. It may not be at your next meeting, so maybe now is a good time to discuss that.
Any other questions for Commissioner Ward?
I will follow up on Commissioner Lambert's comment about the circulation, because I'm one of those people that sits on Flagler and parent pickup at Rosarian, and so I would just encourage extra caution and add more. And if there's covered areas, we have lots of rain and pickup that ends up delaying pickup, and so I don't know if that's something that you guys have thought about, but because that's a curve, it's kind of similar to where we see in a little bit North Flagler, that it just becomes a problem. People are speeding, and you just wouldn't want to have an accident there. So I know 30 cars does seem like a lot, but you just, I would, you know, just make sure extra caution that you're adding on, and of course, covered parking, a covered area to pick up and drop off the children.
Tyler, does that covered area reach over the student drop-off and pickup area?
Yes.
Yeah. That's a yes. Yep. So the awning, for lack of a better word, overhang covers that area.
Any other questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Warrior.
Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of public, Lucy Centini, Senior Planner for the City of West Palm Beach, planning zone division for the records. Again, thank you so much for the presentation. You make our lives very easy with this beautiful presentation. So I'm going to glance it over really quick on staff's analysis regarding the waiver requests. Regarding waiver number one, for the minimum acres for the RPD, staff finds sufficient and complies with the request. Waiver number two, for the building height.
Can you put that on full screen, please? Make it larger. Put it on the full screen. Thank you.
You're welcome. My apologies. There we go. Again, for waiver number two, building heights and site setbacks, staff finds and complies with the request. Waiver number three and four, for the number of access points and the maximum number of total access points for any one of the property is limited to no more than four access points. Staff believes it complies with the request also, as already discussed. For the waiver number five, to allow the decrease in the minimum separation required between access points onto a collector roadway along South Flagler Drive. between access points onto a collector roadway along South Flagler Drive and South Olive Avenue, the applicant responded thoroughly regarding the back of the house also, and they require that it has to have a minimum separation between the accessways and the egress-ingress. Therefore, staff finds this complies with the request. For waiver number six, specific use regulations for accessory daycare activity area setbacks, as the applicant explained, and staff analyzed and finds it complies with the request. Same with waiver number seven, specific use regulations for the school activity area setbacks. Fifty feet is a minimum for the residential zoning district. There is no residential zoning district around. As you noticed on the previous presentation, staff finds it complies with the request. We have no concerns or comments about it. And for the final, staff finds the recommendations for the resolution 224-24 for the abandonment of Chetbourne Court. Staff recommends the approval. Staff believes that the request complies with Section 78-214 of the City Code of Ordinance. In regards to ordinance number 5112-24 for the future land use map amendment, staff believes that it complies with the Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. It is in accordance with the procedures of Chapter 94-33 of the City of West Palm Beach Comprehensive Plan. It complies with the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy 115, ten assumptions. Ordinance number 5113-24 for the termination and rezoning, staff approves the request. It believes it complies with Section 94-32A of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations for the rezoning standards. Ordinance number 5114-24 for the rezoning, staff approves the request. It believes it complies with Section 94-32A of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations for the rezoning standards, and also complies with Section 94-207D of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations for the residential plan development provisions and requirements. And for the resolution 22524, Development Regulations for the discussion for the next item for the planning, also the planning board members recommend the approval unanimously of this request on September 17th for the City Commission Agenda. Therefore, that, staff finalized this presentation. Any questions, comments, or concerns for the staff?
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Mr. Warrior, I need you, there is something that we need to discuss. Thank you, staff. I need to hear from you all before second reading about your plans for hiring smaller minority businesses on this project. We did it with the Bristol and the other ones. We did it with Vanderbilt. I need to see some commitments. I think 18% is the percentage number that we've been talking about, as well as some internship or programs to help train. Anyway, come up with a program that I can see and discuss with you prior to second reading.
Yes, sir.
Please? Okay.
Part of the discussion on the scholarship program.
Exactly. Okay. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? We do have a card. Staff, are you finished? Your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, would you like me to add a condition or the approval for the scholarship?
Yeah, let's talk about them, however we need to formalize that for both the scholarship program and the smaller minority business program, apprenticeships and stuff that I need to, yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Is that an objection, Mr. Warrior?
No, I just suggest after we meet and have some sort of agreement with administration-
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll work out the details, but-
Then we can propose back to them what that would look like.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Let's work out the details. We do have a card. Michael Zeph.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael Zeph, and I am the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. The Chamber's Government Affairs Committee and the Board of Directors received a presentation from the Family Church last month on this project before you. The Board of Directors voted unanimously to support the project. The Family Church Project will provide expanded K-8 facilities, introducing early childhood development programs, and meeting the needs of West Palm Beach families. After completion, the transformation of this property will generate tax revenue to the city as opposed to the $0 currently being collected from the property. Finally, the new landscaped public spaces will connect pedestrians to the waterfront south of Okeechobee Boulevard and provide open space along Flagler Drive, enhancing connectivity, walkability, and the overall vibrancy of the area. So we urge you to approve the request before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so any other questions, discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 224-24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Lambert? Item 10.2.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5113-24, terminating the First Baptist Church Community Service Plan Development, C S P D, governed by Resolution Number 251-13, and amending the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach to rezone the former First Baptist Church Development from Community Service Plan Development, C S P D zoning designation to Community Service, C S, zoning designation. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the amendment complies with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach and the provisions of Chapter 94 of the city's zoning and land development regulations, Z L D R.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5113-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, terminating the First Baptist Community Church Community Service Plan Development governed by Resolution Number 25113, located generally at 1101 South Flagler Drive, and amending the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach to rezon the approximately 9.897-acre former First Baptist Church site from Community Service Plan Development to Community Service zoning designation. Declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
I move to approve ordinance Number 5114-24, to change the zoning designation of plus or minus 9.897 acres located at 1101 South Flagler Drive from Community Service, C S, to multifamily high-density M F 32 zoning designation, with a further rezoning to residential plan development, R P D, zoning designation with an acreage waiver to create the Family Church of West Palm Beach Residential Plan Development, R P D. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in Sections 94-32, 94-35C, 94-204, and 94-207 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5114-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, by rezoning approximately 9.897-acre parcel located generally at 1101 South Flagler Drive from Community Service zoning designation to multifamily high-density zoning designation, with a further rezon to a residential plan development zoning designation with an acreage waiver to create the redevelopment of the Family Church Residential Plan Development, providing for the establishment of development regulations by separate resolution. Declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now turning to item 10.3, we need to have a motion continuing that item to a date certain. There is a recommended motion.
Mayor, I move to continue consideration of Resolution Number 229-24 to the commission meeting scheduled to begin at 5:00 PM on December 9th, 2024, at the City of West Palm Beach City Hall Commission Chambers, 401 Comata Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, now time for public comment. We have two cards, Annie Ruth Nelson and Sylvia Perez. You want to start making your way to the podium? Annie Ruth Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Annie Ruth Nelson, City of West Palm Beach, Roosevelt Estates Neighborhood Association. I don't think I've ever come before you to express any kind of discontent about your service, your departments, the services of any of your departments. But at this time, I'm a little bit exhausted, and I'm frustrated over the consistent amount of phone calls, emails, and even meetings with your administrators, your department heads and staff, over the poor workmanship of a very long-awaited infrastructure project on the roads in our neighborhood. We're not just complaining, that's why I'm here. This is our complaints over small issues that can easily be fixed. In 10 or 15 years down the road, we will be back again before you because of poor work performance that was done on this job that will begin to show in a number of years. We're not just complaining, our concerns are actually legitimate. And tonight, the final thing that has brought me here tonight is after we met with the Engineering Department just a month ago, that meeting was suggested by Mrs. Johnson concerning the roundabouts in our neighborhood. We have selected colors, the trees, the plants that we wanted in the roundabouts, and, you know, unfortunately, the contractors just did the roundabouts and put the wrong colors in there. Concreted them in. Concreted the wrong colors in the roundabouts. And I was just told that they made a mistake. And you pay for what you get, and the lowest bid does not always yield quality performance. If the poor workmanship was in any of your neighborhoods, I'm sure you would not accept it, nor would you pay for it. We do not believe that these errors are going to get fixed as we have been told by engineering. We will ask you to correct, to have a correction put in writing before you pay this contractor, because we've told Kevin that this contractor has done a poor job, even on the first project that he had, on the paving job on Sixth Street and Clearlake. I don't know what more we can do but to bring our complaints to you. So I'm going to leave this problem up to you and expect that you would do something to assist us in getting these things corrected. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, can you follow up with me after this meeting, and we'll see what we can address?
Yes, Mayor. Well, I certainly, we had not been made aware that after we coordinated the meeting and thought we had a plan moving forward, that the contractor then put the wrong items in, but I will certainly follow up on that and report back.
Thank you. Sylvia Perez?
Yes, my name is Sylvia Perez. I live at 580 South Zapodilla Avenue, Apartment 108, West Palm Beach. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would like to thank you for the phenomenal work that the ambassadors are doing to keep our streets free of trash. I had a visitor from Canada recently who told me that she had never seen such a clean city. On an unrelated note, I would like to ask that you require retail businesses to accept cash as a form of payment, since the dollar is the official currency and legal tender of the United States of America. An example of a cashless establishment is Pura Vida, an eatery at the corner of Rosemary and Front Streets. Anyone not having a credit card or debit card cannot even get a cup of coffee there. In addition, restaurants, bars, and coffee shops should be required to have printed menus instead of customers having to scan QR codes. How are cashless establishments and QR code menus diverse, equitable, and inclusive of the unbanked, the elderly, and any others who are not tech savvy or simply cannot afford an iPhone? Additionally, I would like to ask that you please keep in-person customer service reception desks, for example, at the Department of Motor Vehicles, where it is a pleasure to walk in and be able to talk to a real person. I would like to ask that you ban the use of facial recognition technology and biometrics to access services and/or venues. These are unnecessarily invasive technologies that infringe on the basic rights to privacy of law-abiding, tax-paying citizens and legal residents. In closing, I would like to reiterate my position, which is shared by many. No to a cashless society. No to QR codes. No to facial recognition and biometrics. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now turn to comments from the dais, and we will begin with President Ward.
Thank you. As announced last meeting, we are still hosting the Northern Police Chief Meetings with the interim chief. It's tomorrow, Wednesday, November 13th, 6:30 at Gaines Park. I hope to see you all there. And also, join the city for a health and wellness collaboration between FamU Cooperative Extension, Trendy Gourmet, and Alpha Herbs on November 14th, the following night at 6:30 at the Pleasant City Community Garden, 2147 Spruce Avenue. This community event is all about staying healthy and resilient during the cold and flu season, get practical tips on boosting your immune system with fresh herbs, nutritious recipes, and holistic wellness practices. And in addition, FamU also has multiple garden days in both our Coleman Park and Pleasant City Community Gardens, and I still run into community members who don't know about it. So we shared the flyer. If you want more information, please reach out. They're phenomenal additions to our community, and the garden days are happening all throughout the rest of the month of November as well as December. And finally, I just wanted to bring something up that I'm still hearing about, and I know that there's a lot going on in the city, and that we addressed one of the issues in the ordinance that this commission passed a while ago, which was that we would be able to enforce the dinghies that are in some of our, and removal in some of our waterfront parks. Minister Johnson, I know that I've sent you a couple of emails on it, and I just wanted to let my other commissioners know that we're, and to kind of remind you, it's still happening, and I know that we passed that, and we realize that the mean water level is, we can't go past that. But I think we need to work with our other agencies to find a way forward, because, you know, just the other night, I was at a community meeting, they were talking about a boat that was spilling, you know, oil into the waterway. We're working really hard and resiliency and trying to make our waterfront beautiful, and that defeats the purpose. So I don't know if we need to procure maybe a submerged land lease at that park in particular, and maybe elsewhere, just like the private sector does, just so that we could enforce that waterfront. But we need to come up with something, because that community in and of itself is really being harmed by all of the people who are utilizing our water to live on and utilizing that as an access point, which I don't think that they should be. So we did try, and we passed that ordinance, but it didn't work, and so we need to come up with something else to help that, because it's only a matter of time before we see it in Curry, and then we see it in Osprey, and all the other parks in our area. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
I'm Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Warren?
I knew what you were saying.
We just looked so much alike, I get it.
It's the W, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Every November is Diabetes Awareness Month, and it's observed to raise awareness about the impact of diabetes, which is a chronic disease that affects millions of people in America. Nationally, more than 38 million Americans have diabetes, including children. More alarming, the American Diabetes Association, A D A, estimates that 97 million individuals in the U.S. are prediabetic. World Diabetes Day, the observance of World Diabetes Day is November 14th. November is also No Shave November. November is also No Shave November, which is a month-long campaign where participants forego shaving and grooming. I'm going to encourage personal grooming, but forego the shaving to raise awareness and funds for cancer research, education, and patient care. Campaigns aim to spark conversations about cancer prevention and encourage people to embrace their hair, which many cancer recipients lose during treatment. Some ways to support No Shave November is grow a beard, organize a beard-growing contest or other event to raise funds. You can donate. If you can't grow your hair, you can still support the cause by donating or encouraging others to join in. I am very happy to attend the National League of Cities Sentinel City Summit in Tampa November thirteenth through sixteenth. I'll be attending workshops on trending and emerging topics, showcasing research, insights, and support for common challenges that we face across the nation. One of the benefits is advocacy and a collective voice. The League of Cities Annual Summit gives cities a stronger unified voice in advocating for urban policy and funding at state and federal levels. Through collective advocacy, cities can push for more responsive and supportive policies that address municipal needs directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. This Saturday, the Northwest Residents in Action will be hosting a community cleanup of the historic Northwest. They'll be meeting on Saturday, November sixteenth, at eight-thirty a.m. at the Heart and Soul Park. If anyone is interested to come out and join us, we'd love to have you. It looks like Annie has left, but I do want to say thank you to Annie from Roosevelt Estates Neighborhood for always coming and advocating for the neighborhood. It's really unfortunate that there have been some issues with the contractor selected. I'm very much looking forward to this work being completed, but I hope that I can sit down with you, Administrator Johnson, and try to iron out some of the issues that we're having the contractor. I don't know if there's something that we can do to intervene or looking for other options, but I know that this neighborhood is very excited. I think it's going to be transformational for generations, but only if we get it right. So I do appreciate her always advocating and look forward to communicating more with administration on that issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. And to that point, you know, through the years, I think that we hear from a lot of folks who advocate consistently for their neighborhoods, and that sometimes we don't always hear from the folks who maybe don't have the extra time to come to commission meetings, maybe aren't as aware of how to contact and advocate, and so, you know, I think that it's incumbent upon us as a city to make sure that we have checks and balances in place so that when we have contracts that, you know, we make sure that we're following through on what we promised we would do. I know that that's very important in all of our neighborhoods throughout the city of folks who might not have the ability to come and speak up for themselves. But additionally, I wanted to thank those who came to support the new Carson Reading Room at South Olive Elementary. We had a ribbon cutting last week. Not only is the Carson Foundation supportive of that, but also our local groups, Woodfield Development and Flagler Realty, and I got a chance to see the kids enjoying that new reading room, and it's tremendous, and I know will provide lots of opportunities for kids to expand their reading opportunities and creativity. Also attended the dedication of the Julian Abel Park and Fred Eversley Portals art, new public art that we have in our downtown. We mentioned it earlier. It is transformative for our city, and it's beautiful, and I'd encourage anybody who has not yet visited that to do so. And then finally, I just wanted to take a moment to share just a personal story. I did share this on my social media, so I want to say thank you to those who have sent their condolences. My stepfather passed away unexpectedly yesterday, and this man was a part of my life since before I can even remember him not being a part of my life. And one thing, as we were fortunate enough to gather many family members around his side during his last moments, I took a step back and I looked at our family, and we have a beautiful blended family, and that has been one of the greatest gifts of my life. And I just wanted to share that with you all, that, you know, I think that that is the sentiment of our public service, as well as that family is more than just blood. It is, we're joined through shared experiences, through love and support of one another, and I just wanted to say thank you to those of you on the dais who have become like family, and to those in the community that, you know, we're all in this together and in the short time that we have together, and I just wanted to say thank you and to make every day count. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for sharing those words and thoughts and prayers with you and your family during this difficult time. Couple things, our Sandy Tree has been nominated for a fourth year for Best Public Holiday Lights Display for Holiday in Paradise in the USA Today, Ten Best Readers' Choice Competition. Those under the sound of my voice, please help us make our holiday display number one again this year by casting your vote for Sandy daily. Vote early and vote often. Visit the city's website at wpb.org and click on the banner to vote. The contest ends on December second at eleven-fifty-nine a.m. We have another Soul in the City Jazz Experience coming up next Wednesday. This one will involve Solomon J. He has taken the stage to share an electric performance in his show Tap in the Soul. He blends multi octave vocals and world-class tap dancing on a soulful set list featuring both classic and contemporary chart-topping hits. Again, that's next Wednesday, November twentieth, at the Lake Pavilion from seven to nine. Tickets are still available, but going that, going fast. Please visit wpb.org/jazz for complete details. Also, please join us for the Third Annual Share a Supper, which is a special event to bring the Pleasant City community together for a delicious Thanksgiving meal. Share a Supper twenty-twenty-four is being made possible thanks to the generosity of the city and the local business community. The event will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, from four-thirty to six-thirty p.m. at the Pleasant City Community Center at five-hundred-twenty-second Street. For more information, please contact the Pleasant City Community Center. Shop small and support local on Small Business Saturday in Northwood Village. That will be happening on Saturday, November thirtieth, from ten a.m. to seven p.m. Go out and enjoy a fun day of shopping, giveaways, and even a live DJ. Get a free Northwood Village tote bag with your purchases. It's the perfect way to kick off the holiday season and by supporting small businesses. Learn more at northwoodvillage.com. And then the Holiday in Paris Sandy Tree Lighting will be happening on the Great Lawn on Thursday, December fifth, from six to ten p.m. Experience the world's only thirty-five-foot, seven-hundred-ton sand tree, Sandy, and Ferris, a fifty-foot Ferris wheel. The annual celebration also features a hundred tons of accompanying sand sculptures, the Be Good Ship Lollipop, a giant pirate ship, and a fifty-ton sand bar where kids can play. There will be daily things to see and do, and lots of free and affordable entertainment. Embrace the festive spirit and create cherished memories at this remarkable evening. Also, join the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency at Winter in Paradise on Friday, December sixth, from five to nine p.m. This family-friendly event will take place at Heart and Soul Park located at eight-twenty-five North Rosemary Avenue. Enjoy free food, live music, a holiday lighting ceremony, and information regarding the CRA redevelopment projects. For more information, visit winterinparadise.com. That's all I have. Good night, everyone. God bless you. God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. This meeting is adjourned.